Good evening, everyone. What a crowd. Today is Thursday, May 17th, and I'm going to open up the school committee meeting. And as typical, we'll start with our pledge of allegiance. But I'm going to ask that our newly-elected school committee member, Maya Plotkin, lead us in the pledge, and we will welcome her to the table in June after she is sworn in at the town meeting on May 30. Okay? Will you do that first?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a pretty packed agenda here, a packed room, packed agenda. But before we get to that, Emily, before we get to the superintendent's report, I know that Ms. Jowdy has something she wants to say.
I just wanted to say that Brian Kelly is not going to be able to be with us tonight. And he's, we always start with, he's not going to be able to join us because this would have been his last meeting. He was called, he worked, dictated that he has to be in Washington tonight. But he wants everyone to know how much he enjoyed being on the school committee and enjoyed working with all the parents and the kids in town.
Thank you. We will.
Oh, and also Danielle will be here later.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Great. All right.
Great, thank you.
Your floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Well, I'm very excited. We have several students here tonight. This is a great time of year where we get to recognize some of the accomplishments of our students. And so what I'd like to do is tell you a little bit about who's here, and then I'm going to call their names, and we have some certificates. And sort of for each group, let's see. Who did we designate to be our photographer? Can you? Yes, Ken. All right. We do have a designated photographer.
He just designated me.
Oh, all right. Mr. Olet, the designated photographer. Great. So first of all, I want to recognize some students that we have with us from Sheehan. They were finalists at the National Geographic Bee at Sheehan. And if these students, if you could stand when I call your name, and come on forward. This is quite an accomplishment. So first, we have Francesca Genari. Sarah Luna Sassin. And Nico Castro. And I'm told that the Sheehan champion was Sarah Luna, who then competed at the State Bee in April. So congratulations to all of you. You guys, come on down. We'd love to give you a certificate, and we'll take your photographs. Thank you. I'm pretty organized. Sarah Luna. Yay! Great. Come on over here, guys. Come into the middle here. It's kind of a confusing... All right. And then sticking with our geography theme for a moment, we have with us a grade four student, Downey Nathan Feinfeld. And Nathan participated in the National Geographic Bee. He answered all of the questions perfectly through six rounds and was seven for eight overall. So Nathan knows quite a bit about geography. Nathan, if you want to come on down, we have a certificate for you, and we'll also get a picture with you. Oh, grade five. I'm sorry. Grade five. Thank you, Mrs. Gallagher. My... You should mention that Ms. Borchers and I were at a conference today and heard a speaker. He was talking about changes in sort of the modern era, and how we all used to learn math skills, and how now people just like punch the destination into their phone and don't even look at the back. And so it made me think how fantastic it is that we have these geography scholars here. All right. And next, we have some students here from the Martha Jones School. Martha Jones, for several years now, has participated in the Stock Market Game. This is an activity where kids are given a certain amount of money, sort of virtual money, and they invest their money over time and see how much money they can make on their investment. And the students were quite successful. And so first, I would like to recognize two grade five students who won the fall round of the Stock Market Game. These two students are Sean Collins and Luke Stacy.
Come on down, boys.
Come on down. And I'm also going to call down two other folks. So Brady Dumay and Sean Trusavich. These are grade five students from Martha Jones who won the spring round of the Stock Market Game. And last but certainly not least, we were very excited this year that we have a student in grade five at Martha Jones who won first place in Massachusetts and third in the nation in the Stock Market Game essay competition. It was quite remarkable, and I'm trying to remember when that was. I was at Martha Jones when the, when was that?
End of January.
End of January, where someone representing the national organization came in, and there was a big surprise at Martha Jones because I think the student didn't know that she didn't place third in the nation. And it was a great moment. Her parents were there. So, Eve Lucas.
So let me see. I can tell by your pants whether you just left the game. You're going to the game, okay.
And Sean.
There we go.
Stacy. Brady.
Come on, we're going to take a picture.
Very good. You've got to keep like people have received awards or things from another study. It's great.
Two more. There you go. First one.
And actually, I want to recognize Mark Hogan, who is faculty advisor for the Stock Market Game along with Rob Bartlett. Okay. Our last set of recognitions, we have several high school students who were very successful this year in the Massachusetts Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. And I have to say that you're going to see that our arts program is thriving here in Westwood when you hear about all of the recognitions and the accomplishments of these students. So I had to do a little cross-referencing because I noticed when I looked at the list that several of you won more than one award. So I hope I have got all this information correct. If I could maybe just ask you first to stand when I call your name. I'll just read through the list, and then we can sort of applaud for everybody and take a picture. So first, Daspina Astlanidis. Did I get that right? Okay, great. Daspina won a gold key in sculpture and honorable mention in ceramics and glass. Then Rose Cotella, she won two gold keys in design and an honorable mention in mixed media. Brenna Cox won a gold key in photography and also an honorable mention in photography. Helen Dong, she won a gold key for her writing portfolio. Kaylee Fiorino, she won two gold keys in design, a silver key in digital art, and an honorable mention for her portfolio in design. Hannah Shabi won two gold keys in design. Or is it Shabi? Shabi, Hannah Shabi. Katie Webster won a gold key in sculpture. Gina Yang won a gold key in design, a silver key in design, and a silver key for her portfolio in design. Hannah Blum won a silver key for sculpture and honorable mention in design. Abigail Drager won a silver key for photography. Brigitte Goss, a silver key in painting and an honorable mention in painting. Kaylee Morrison won two silver keys in painting. Race Perone won a silver key in drawing and illustration. Neil Way won a silver key in design, an honorable mention in design, and an honorable mention in mixed media. Will Conway won an honorable mention in film and animation. Alexander Lathan won an honorable mention in design. Last but not least, Ryan Shea won an honorable mention in sculpture. And I'm going to turn to Mrs. Thurston, who is our K-12 Director of Art for a second because I don't remember a year when we had such success in this program. I mean...
The National Medal of Honor is the 51st.
I'm getting to that in a second. Don't steal my thunder, Mrs. Thurston. Okay, yes. So it's fantastic. And then, yes, drumroll. This year, we also had four students who, so if you win a gold key, let's make sure I get this right. If you win a gold key at the state level, then your work is submitted for a national competition, judged nationally. And we have four students who are very successful at the national level this year, which is really remarkable. So I'd like to recognize these students as well. Rose Cotella, she is in grade 12. She won a National Gold Medal in Design for ink book cover. And also a National Silver Medal in Design for her pie making playing cards, which I've seen in everyone. Brenna Cox, who is in ninth grade, won a National Silver Medal in Photography for her photo, Curious Days. Hannah Shabi is in grade 11, and she won a National Silver Medal in Design for her Octopus Accordion Book. And Kaylee Fiorino, grade 12, won a National Silver Medal in Design for Woman 2.0. So we are really proud of all these students, and I want to acknowledge the work that Mrs. Thurston does, leading our K-12 art department and the art teachers at Westwood High School, Liza Houston, Kate Jellinghouse, and Lucy Herkovich, who do remarkable work with our students through their entire time here at Westwood High School. And of course, I think the success of our high school students in art is also built on the foundation that they get in elementary school and middle school. So we appreciate the work of teachers K-12 here in getting our students to this moment. So all of our artists, if you could come on up, and we will... Okay, great. Gather around.
While we have Mrs. Thurston here, is there any way of putting you on the spot now? That with all of these amazing pieces of art, we, how can the public see them? Should we have another small exhibit? Could we do it now? We want to see it.
Can we have them virtually? Is there a portal?
(Inaudible).
That would be great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So we're very proud of all of our students. Thank you to all the parents who came out to join us today. And I think this is the part where we say, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting...
And we never understand why you don't.
This will be a perfectly fine time to make your exit, so...
Good night. Thank you. Good luck in your game.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Take one of them down. Thank you. Oh, you know, I should mention that, sir, Mr. Petrako, he kind of traditionally misses this meeting because there's a business, school business personnel conference that happens.
Okay. No worries.
I should have noted his absence, yes.
Okay, very good. So we'll continue with the superintendent's report?
Great, thank you. Okay. So the next item in the superintendent's report, Abby Hanscom is going to give us an ESPERT update.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, Abby. See you.
Nice to be seeing you. And there we go. I think that'll set the tone for tonight.
So you guys should have three here that's in front of you. One is a set of the notes from tonight. The other is kind of a big thick packet, and I'll give you context on that. And then you have a questionnaire in front of you. So one, two, three. If you need, if you need one, I'm going to put one up right there. Your questionnaire looks like this.
This one. Oh, sorry. No, they're all sitting on my notebook here. I'm sorry. I'm going to pull it together.
Somebody's to last meeting. Thank you. Okay. So briefly, this is an ESPERT update. And if you recall from previous meetings, ESPERT is an acronym that stands for screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment. And it is substance abuse screening that is required to be done in public schools. And that, as you remember from following through the trajectory of that, we came to understand around Christmas time of this year. So just very briefly, we have a plan in place for screening at grade 10 for February of this next year, and that will happen in February. And so there's a team of people at the high school who are working on that. There's about eight folks. And the team of people will be trained in June in administering the questionnaire that you have in front of you. So I thought you might want to actually see it tonight. I'm going to put up some of the questions so the folks in the community can see the questions as well. The plan for the high school is that in February, for 10th grade students, in what's called sophomore seminar, which is a workshop that's offered through the guidance department and is already part of the structure of the schedule. So if you recall, we were trying to figure out where it would go, which way to take the kids out of class. The 10th grade class will be administered this questionnaire. So that's fact one, that's new information since the last time I updated you. So that leads us to a question about the second grade level. And if you recall, the last time we had a conversation, the thought was we should maybe hold off because at that time we did not have an identified middle school principal. We had an interim assistant principal, so it was still a question mark. And as you may be aware, we have two guidance counselors at middle school, and one of them was out for a year-long maternity leave, so 50% of the department wasn't present. So it felt a little overwhelming. Since then, we have identified a principal, and you've got him, I believe. We've identified the assistant principal, Mr. Kuplins. And we have clarity on the maternity leave and know who exactly will be there. So we're in a bit of a different position. So for the second grade level, what we really could do is train folks, similar team, in the fall, right? Because those people won't be here close to December. And we could pick either seventh or eighth grade to administer this same screener. And so what I wanted to do tonight was share those questions with you, and then just have a little opportunity for question answering discussion. Does that make sense?
It's great.
Great. So the stem on all the survey questions is the same. In the past 12 months, how many days have you, dot, dot, dot? And the four questions that all students will be asked are these four. So have you used any marijuana or synthetic marijuana? Have you taken a prescription medication or pill that was not prescribed to you or taken more than was prescribed? Have you used anything else to get high? And have you ridden in the car by someone who is high or using alcohol or drugs? And depending on those four questions, it'll stem out into other follow-up questions. So I'm going to stop talking for a second and say, what questions do you have?
So that was my first question, the follow-up, and how deep, what's the deep dive here? How far can, can just the person who is asking the questions go? And how do you ensure that you have continuity with every child?
So if you look at the way this tool...
Or consistencies, right?
Yeah, consistent accuracy, right?
Yeah.
You can see the arrow, and essentially, if you answer yes to any of these, you go, they proceed down the list. Okay? And these questions are more individual, and they are more personal. These are the only questions that can be asked. And I'm happy to share this like as a PDF to you if you want to get it out to the parents and people in the community. It's not a secret.
Are we going to put this in our website?
You sure can.
Okay.
This is the research-based tool that is recommended by the Department of Public Health to be used that other towns and communities are using. I guess from my vantage point, I would say, Harold, that in the hands of trained people, they would know when to stem to these following questions, and they would have the clinical judgment to do that.
Okay. How are you going to decide between seventh and eighth?
Well, so this is an interesting question. I guess from my vantage point, the questions are important to consider developmentally. Also, the amount of information you might glean from a seventh grader for these questions versus an eighth grader might be different. So the value of asking at a different age might be worth considering. I think the other factor that we've considered, and we're going to give you a recommendation for the middle school grade level, would be that if we know we're doing 10th grade, that means we're not seeing our ninth graders. And frankly, that's okay because it would be odd to say like, hi, I'm a new freshman. You're my guidance counselor. Let me ask you these personal questions. It's good to have that 10th grade spot. So that kind of all others for the eighth grade as a logical first place. I would also say that there's, you could make good arguments that seventh grade earlier is better. And I think that's what the conversation would be with the group of the middle school people, and we'd leave that to their final decision. There might be a sense in the community that seventh grade feels early to ask these questions, and we need to be careful.
So who will make the decision?
Well, so in our high school model, the guidance counselors, the head of guidance, and myself, we just got to consensus, you know? And we looked at the schedule, which was really important. I think here it would be that group of people, which we can do via Skype, you know?
Okay.
And myself, and we consult with Emily. But I think you could expect that eighth grade might be a logical spot for a couple of reasons, getting kids ready to enter high school. But we'll see.
Why would you be making that decision?
Well, so tonight I'm going to say to you, the recommendation would probably be to go with grade eight. That's a logical thing. I think we need to know by the end of the year.
Will you be informing parents?
Yes.
And how do you inform them?
Okay. So the other communities that have done this because it's required, use their websites, and they're kind of push social media, and it's an informative communication. And there is an opportunity to opt out, but it's an all-in unless you opt out.
What do you mean?
It's required. So we're going to...
Oh, if you don't opt in.
Yeah.
So, okay. I'm foreseeing...
It's all in. Can you opt out in the eighth grade and then participate?
No, once you start the process.
Okay, so it's not forever.
But once you're in the process, you...
It's not forever. So you can, you can opt out in the eighth grade, but participate in the 10th grade?
Yes.
Okay.
The confidential says, oh, keep your answers confidential. Who's, to prove that's confidential, who do I trust saying it's confidential?
Yep. So that's why I gave you the whole big book, because the, all the citations and the research that they're using are here. So two things. This would be considered confidential information, and there is law that says that high school-age kids who disclose substance use and say, please don't tell my parents, we are supposed to honor them unless their health is at risk. So that's, that's a real fact. But I would tell you, this is considered a student record, so it would be preserved confidentially under FOB.
The issue of, I don't want to be honest, okay? I'm taking the test. I'm not, why, you know, why should I? Who are you? Why should I? So that's an issue, I would think.
Yes.
What's going to happen to me if I answer yes? I mean, you know, what, that's my question. What's going to be, am I going to be taken someplace? Do I have to go through a process? So what's the, what's the reason a student would answer honestly?
Trusting adult relationships.
And how deep, how, what's the deep dive here? How far can, can just the person who is asking the questions go? And how do you ensure that you have continuity with every child?
So if you look at the way this tool-
Or consistencies, right?
Yeah, consistent accuracy, right?
Yeah.
You can see the arrow and essentially if you answer yes to any of these, you go, they proceed down the list. Okay? And these questions are more individual and they are more personal. These are the only questions that can be asked. And I'm happy to share this like as a PDF to you if you want to get it out to the parents and people in the community. It's not a secret.
Are we going to put this in our website?
You sure can.
Okay.
This is the research-based tool that is recommended by the Department of Public Health to be used that other towns and communities are using. I guess from my vantage point, I would say, Carol, that in the hands of trained people, they would know when to stem to these following questions and they would have the clinical judgment to do that.
How are you going to decide between seventh and eighth?
Well, so this is an interesting question. I guess from my vantage point, the questions are important to consider developmentally. Also, the amount of information you might glean from a seventh grader for these questions versus an eighth grader might be different. So the value of asking at a different age might be worth considering. I think the other factor that we've considered, and we're going to give you a recommendation for the middle school grade level, would be that if we know we're doing 10th grade, that means we're not seeing our ninth graders. And frankly, that's okay because it would be odd to say like, hi, I'm a new freshman. You're my guidance counselor, let me ask you these personal questions. It's good to have that 10th grade spot. So that kind of all others for the eighth grade as a logical first place. I would also say that there's, you could make good arguments that seventh grade earlier is better. And I think that's what the conversation would be with the group of the middle school people and we'd leave that to their final decision. There might be a sense in the community that seventh grade feels early to ask these questions and we need to be careful.
So who will make the decision?
Well, so in, in our high school model, the guidance counselors, the head of guidance and myself, we just got to consensus, you know? And we looked at the schedule, which was really important. I think here it would be that group of people, which we can do via Skype, you know?
Okay.
And myself, and we consult with Emily. But I think you could expect that eighth grade might be a logical spot for a couple of reasons, getting kids ready to enter high school. But we'll see.
Why would you be making that decision?
Well, so tonight I'm going to say to you, the recommendation would probably be to go with grade eight. That's a logical thing. I think we need to know by the end of the year.
Will you be informing parents if you're doing this? And how do you inform them?
Okay. So the other communities that have done this because it's required, use their websites and they're kind of push social media. And it's an informative communication. And there is an opportunity to opt out. But it's an all-in unless you opt in.
What do you mean?
It's required. So we're going to-
Oh, if you, if you don't opt in.
Yeah.
So, okay. I'm foreseeing-
It's all in, can you opt out in, in the eighth grade and then participate?
No, once you start the process.
So, okay, so it's not forever?
But once you're in the process, you-
It's not forever. So you can, you can opt out in the eighth grade but participate in the 10th grade?
Yes.
Okay.
The confidential says, oh, you can answer confidential. Who's, to prove that's confidential, who do I trust saying it's confidential?
Yep. So that's why I gave you the whole big book because the, all the citations and the research that they're using are here. So two things. This would be considered confidential information. And there is law that says that high school-age kids who disclose substance use and say, please don't tell my parents, we are supposed to honor them unless their health is ever good. So that's, that's a real fact. But I would tell you, this is considered a student record, so it would be preserved confidentially under protocol.
The issue of, I don't want to be honest, okay? I'm taking the test, I'm not quite, you know, why should I? Who are you, why should I? So that's an issue, I would think.
Yes.
What's going to happen to me if I answered yes? I mean, you know, what, that's my question, what's going to be, am I going to be taken someplace? Do I have to go through, so what's the, what's the reason a student would answer honestly?
Trusting adult relationships with people they care about in school who care about you, right? I mean, what the thing that's going to happen is they're going to be referred for services and help. So this is the reality of having these conversations in schools is that we would be having those kind of conversations with kids and saying, here's a pamphlet, here's what treatment looks like, we're happy to call your parents, what help do you need to talk to your parents, what can we do to help you?
But at the, at the initial point, when, so there's probably many children who don't spend a lot of time with guidance or have any special services. So they don't necessarily have a trust relationship with the initial person who's asking the questions. So I think to Charlie's point, at that, how do you foster that when we're starting, let's say with seventh grade, they've been in the school a year? How are you going to develop relationships necessarily with?
These are really fair questions and there aren't perfect answers.
And I'm not, I'm just questioning the state on that, in that-
Are there surveys where you don't ask the kids themselves, but they say, among people you know and your friends?
There are not, so it's-
Just to compare, do we have an issue here?
If I kid.
Then what, we're late, right? Other towns have started this before?
Um, some, no.
So do we have an experience, it's like kids maybe that have been through it?
Yep.
Been referred, who could say, I'm glad I did it because this helped me.
It's private.
Do we draw on, to show kids that they're going through it? If you're honest, we hope this is what, why kids are happy they did it because it helped them change as up to. Do we have any experience of that?
You have, you have privacy laws, though, you can't, you wouldn't be able to even ask those kinds of questions.
I think if you, if towns or businesses have done it, if they've asked, you know, kids to volunteer comments that could be used by others, no names, just a, you know, I'm glad I did it, and that's a quote from somebody that did it, to let these kids know. And this is a very scary thing for a kid that has a problem getting an answer this way.
So in my experience, we've spoken to people from other communities that are further along and their experience is that by asking these questions, you put out into the, the air that kids are breathing in the building, that people are interested in talking about this. And kids actually come back, so even if in that moment they decline or they say no, a week later somebody shows up in the guidance counselor's office, I was thinking about that question. Yeah, I wanted to-
Is there any education before they do this?
So this week part of-
When people come in and say, this is why we're doing it, this is how we think we can help you, you know, sooner, better sooner now than later. So, you know, giving them an education of why they might want to be honest and participate.
So towns that do this develop a little entry conversation that's also consistent for kids, that's developmentally appropriate. And as part of sophomore seminar, that'll be introduced. Another thing in eighth grade is that students in our eighth grade curriculum department do have some previous learning about substance abuse, so there is some context in eighth grade as well.
So Tony, I'm going to just point to you for a minute because I know this was a subject you were concerned about. Do you have anything that-
No, it's great. I, this is my question, this is just more about, so if somebody says yes on some of these questions?
Yes.
You can't reveal the parents. You can if they say it's okay. And you give them, but let's say they say no, then you give them a shift.
And I would say you're still one step further than you were before you asked.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, just more question, I mean, today, I'm sure there's obviously kids, they come to guidance counselor, they've had this-
This happens all the time.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Okay. That's what I mean, so this, yes.
Okay. So my question is, you said that you can always tell the parents if you think it's a safety request?
Now, so the way it's constructed, most kids are very willing when they have disclosed something, they, you know, know they need help, to work with adults.
Right.
That's, that's most instances. There are rare, rare instances where kids say, you can't, don't tell anyone. And we do have in Massachusetts this little protection so that those kids could still get treatment and we wouldn't have to notify them.
So what if the-
But it's very rare. And what, before I finish, I mean, so what we would do in those situations is work double, triple hard to help that student tell their parents, right? It's just that that process is longer.
Encourage them to do that?
We would work hand in hand with them to get to that place.
Okay, but if my kid is, I don't know, doing any of these things, hash or weed, all right, isn't that-
I don't, don't look at me!
There we go, yep.
Or taking pills that's supposed to be taking, I mean, isn't that a safety issue?
Yes, and so what we would do is, as the school, we would work through a process, which we are developing right now, so that we could make sure that everybody was safe.
Okay, so-
There's a way to do that.
What's your timeline?
Especially in the- so we're ready to go for February.
No, no, I mean, what's your timeline? So you have, you have a kid who comes in and says, you know, doing this, don't tell my parents, okay? How long do you let that go before?
Every case will be individual, but I can tell you that the people at the high school in particular already are very skilled in working kids through these things and supporting kids. So I think this is where their clinical judgment and their ethics come into play and we have to let them do that work.
So what happened?
Can I have, I have a- I want to have my question.
Go, go! We're all very, this is very important.
Are we, when we tell parents about this, are we telling them everything about it so that they know that, you said that this becomes, is it public? I mean, is it, will this go on with their, with their transcripts and?
All these questions, yes. All right, so the student record-
Yeah.
Is anything that has a student's identified name on it.
All right.
In order to do this, you have to know who was speaking. However, this is a very confidential kind of piece of information, so it would be kept very confidentially and filed by the clinical person who's talking to the student. It is always available to a parent because the parent has a right to their student's record, right? But when kids get to be older, 17, 18, they gain, you know, at 18, they gain control of their record. So you could foresee maybe a senior would be in control of that record.
Would that record, though, could it, is it conceivable that this record would be passed on with the transcripts to?
No, so that is not-
Okay, okay.
No, and it, and pretty clear that they've worked through those kind of weird questions and all that is held out for them.
It's okay.
No, there's a great question. Did you want to add something?
I, I was just reflecting on, you know, when I was an assistant principal, a while ago. But, you know, these are the kinds of conversations that you would end up having with your kids where, you know, you express concern, you get stoned, or you express concern again, right? You've got to keep coming back. And, and I think that is the experience, that just asking the question, and sometimes kids realize that you're receptive to that. And in, I can't think of any time where, where we couldn't eventually, pretty quickly get to, we need to involve your parents in this. They'll take care for you, this is what we need to do.
What if the issue involves the parents?
Well, so I did want to put that up there if you read back on it.
So if the parent has a problem and-
You know, the person who's driving the car-
Is the, is the parent?
Could be anybody, babysitter, you know, anybody. And so it's just important to understand that this is a little bit of a foray into the public health world that we normally aren't in. And I just, again, want to be thoughtful about that, probably taking our time.
As far as training, and maybe we talked about this, but remind me, how many hours do we take?
It's a full day and it's free, which is great because it's covered through this kind of requirement. And I'll know a little more once our first group of people go. And I do think, in fact, many of the logistic questions are exactly what the training will give them, some people to network with, to go through the fine points of, absolutely. A lot of it, they'll say, we defer your local practices. And so we do get some control and say, over our record keeping, decision-making, that and stuff.
And the last thing, when you said that the individual, the person who, maybe I misunderstood, but, but say you were interviewing me, you maintain that in the, is there a central database or is it?
Again, that's the kind of thing we're going to have to decide how we want to do that. My instinct is that we would want to take very good care of this material to keep it confidential, so we're less likely to have this and that to come with. I want to be clear, though, that the law says that two grade levels a year need to be screened, that's 500 pools.
Right, so how do you maintain it?
A year, every year. So we're, in 10 years, we'll have much, much pieces taken. So we will have to figure out how to do this well and confidentially. There are ways to do it.
Can you just report anything back to the state on the data?
We can report that we do it and not the data.
Yeah, okay.
How much time is this going to take, our school district to do?
This is going to take some time. The first year, we were planning monthly meetings, so there'll be a new monthly meeting in people's calendars at high school and middle school. And then we think after the first year, it'll run like other things, that it'll become much more efficient and it'll really be like a kickoff process and a ramp-up process. But I've discussed that with folks at the high school.
How long is each kid? How long is a screening?
It's very brief. So it's literally a five-minute kind of interview. So if you think it's maybe 10 minutes in total, entry, warm them up, five minutes, wrap them up, and next kid. I mean, this is built to be a type, what's called brief interview, and that's a type of clinical interview style. And people will actually get retrained in that, you learn it in grad school, but part of the day is they get retrained in brief interview. Clear, concise, to the point, move it along.
The public state's done this, and so what, have they learned or?
This is a question. So Massachusetts, this is a particular focus of the governor of Massachusetts, so I think this is somewhat specific to how Massachusetts does things. I'll look into the other states for you.
It'd be interesting, what, what will they say they got out of the, how does it help them?
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments? Thanks for that.
Yep, thank you.
We really grilled you. It was, it's very interesting.
Great, thanks, Abby. Okay. So next is the quarter three financial report. As I mentioned, Keith is not here this evening, but he submitted something in your packet. I think the, you know, overarching theme is that we're on track here at the end of the third quarter and look right on track for the end of the year. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to take them. I probably would say that I'll pass them along to Keith and see if I can get back to you if they're-
Well, just to, Keith just emailed the committee, I'm just curious, maintenance is an area that sometimes we have some support, you know, we kind of, I'm just curious where we're at, what we're going to have on that.
Okay, great.
With the budget.
I can get back to you on that.
It just sometimes itself will too, and like items that are like 150% spent, you know, maybe some feedback on what's going on there.
Yeah. Okay. Building project, community engagement update. So as you know, we have been out talking to a lot of people about our potential elementary building project. And I will take this opportunity to say it again, that there's an important vote coming up at town meeting on May 30th. The school committee has a warrant article and the warrant article will be asking residents to approve borrowing an amount up to $1.75 million to fund the feasibility study, which is the next step in the MSVA process to potentially get tens of millions of dollars towards a, an elementary school building project. So in March and April, I gave 12 different community presentations with question-answer sessions. So I included in that, I attended seven PTO meetings. We held additionally community forums at SHAN, at Hanlon, on the Council on Aging, and most recently, Carol and I went to Fox Hill Village and met with residents there. Several of those forums were videoed by Westwood Media Center and are on the Westwood Media Center link, but they're also on our building project webpage. So there's a link if people missed the presentation and want to learn more, you can see the presentation online. We have also on that webpage now put up a very brief FAQ. There are about five questions that we felt like emerged from the community forum, so we have answered those questions for folks. And at this point, I feel like the, trying to educate people about what the issue is and this tremendous opportunity we have, what the needs are, we're sort of pivoting. And at this point, the message is that we need to encourage people to attend town meeting. Decisions are made by the people who show up and we need people who are invested in the future of our schools to get to town meeting and be part of this very important decision-making process. So the principals have included information about the upcoming town meeting in school-based newsletters. I'm going to be sending a message from Carol and me next week to our parent listserv also with some information. Josephah, Charlie and I met with the PTO presidents recently, they're all very supportive, and said that they would assist us in sort of getting their friends and neighbors to town meeting. And then I know that there are school committee members who, which have your individual strategies for how you're getting folks out to-
We certainly do.
To, to town meeting. So this, you know, this is a big decision moment for us. And I have said that, to me, this is like the common sense way forward to address our, our, our building needs. And I'm feeling, I'm feeling optimistic. I mean, frankly, in all of these forums that I've given, people ask great questions and are tremendously supportive. I've gotten virtually no pushback from people who think this isn't the way to go. You know, the only question in my mind is, will the people who support it be there to vote? Because that's the part that counts, right? Yeah.
I think we also, I just wanted to add that the 1.75 million, if, you know, we rolled that in, if we go ahead with this project, can be rolled into the final round?
Correct, yes. So, so just to remind folks, the, the process of the feasibility study, so, which would be the next step, is it's a, it's a multi-year process where we work with an architect, we do site testing, environmental testing. The architect basically would work with us and based on what we learn from the community about, you know, sort of what we value, what's important to us, they would present many possible options for a building project. Everything from renovating the buildings we have to, you know, building new. And there, then we would go through a process where we get to what the MSVA refers to, the community's preferred solution. And by the end of the feasibility study, part of what this funding is for, we would have the schematic design for the preferred design. At that point, there would be another vote, I assume it would be a ballot question, a debt exclusion. And assuming that the project went forward, then we would be eligible for the reimbursement, probably about a third from MSVA, including the cost of the feasibility study at that point. So, you know, what, for me, this is, people have been very insightful about the questions they've been asking. The feasibility study is up to 1.75 million. We actually think it'll be considerably less. We think more in the neighborhood of 1.2. We could then get a third of that reimbursed.
Right.
Right? The feasibility study is going to cost less than putting a new roof on Hanlon, which is what we will now have to do if we don't go forward with the feasibility study. And that's just one example. So for me, you know, we would then, if, if we didn't go forward with this long-term solution, we would have to immediately start investing significant money just to deal with our short-term needs. And so that's what I mean when I say it feels like, you know, common sense to me that this is going to be with you.
Well, there's also the interesting story of, is it Lincoln?
Yeah.
Yes.
Should I tell the cautionary tale?
I think you should tell the cautionary tale.
Right.
Yes.
Well, so Lincoln, I'm not sure I'll be able to get all the dates right, it'd been about 2012, apparently, they also were invited into the MSVA process and they were up and running. And then the town didn't vote to go forward with it. And so they sort of lost their place in line with the MSVA and they came back a couple of years later then to reapply, to say, let's see if we can do it again. They did that twice more, didn't, didn't get invited in again. So the opportunity for the state reimbursement has gone. In the meantime, the estimated cost of the project went up from like $49 million to like $60 million because years had passed. So the cost of the project went up and they don't have a state reimbursement. And so now they're trying to figure out how to fund the whole thing. Yeah.
I've had the chances, you know, the school committees attend a lot of these meetings personally. I think you've done a fantastic job in explaining it, the issues, answering questions and, you know, the amount of effort you put into it with other staff. And thank you so much for doing it. I've been having a hard time doing, people asking me to explain it and I've written down most of what you've said. So this is a little draft I'm sitting with. I've tried to put down what I thought were the best things you said that the questions were asked. So it's been through six drafts so far.
Yes, the, the, so, from Charlie.
Any, any of the draft system's gonna end tonight.
I have no idea. What article it is, actually.
Oh, there you go.
I think it's 16.
I think it's 14.
14.
I think it's 14.
And the other thing, if, well, if people have been to town meeting, it's gonna be 14. I think it's gonna be after some of the Islington articles, so people should be prepared.
No, the Islington is after.
Uh, well, no, that, so there are...
Well, there's...
Three articles related to Islington before.
But the big one.
The big one is after this.
So it could be late though.
So the fireworks are at the end, are afterward.
But could be a late night.
Could be, could be.
But the other thing is to remind people that there are several of the 14, I mean, for someone who's never been to town meeting, you say there are 14 warrants, they're gonna say, oh my, that sounds like a lot. So many of them at the beginning, right, are fly right through. And then you get to, so...
Like the omnibus for town budget? Nobody says a word.
Right.
Whatever it is on there.
But it would be nice, but Charlie, you're, you're the best cheerleader of the...
Well, everybody gave me great ideas. So anything more, this is it, it's going to bed.
I think this is great.
14 people.
Oh, yes, oh, we, you know, we've got a lot of help.
His family's probably 20.
Yeah, his family. And I think the, a lot of the PTOs have been helping. We've asked everybody, if you're willing to get into this, we need you to call 10 people, get 10 people to show up because a two-thirds vote, you can't get that on what day of the week it is, you know. It's a tough, tough vote to get. So, and it's a shame if we don't get it, it's gonna cost a hell of a lot more money. But I think the point is you gotta get the people out of it. Everybody's so busy doing other things, it's hard to get your 10 people to show up.
A nice thing about this, though, this push, is that maybe we'll get more regulars at the meeting. I mean, it really is an interesting process. It's an old process, it's a historic process, and it's pretty cool that anyone in the town can stay up, can stand up and say what they believe. And it's, it's...
And sometimes they do.
And often they do. So it's, it's, at times quite entertaining. So, you know, I think, I hope we get, we get people hooked on the process in any case.
Great. Okay. And then just a quick school security update. So there's another article at town meeting. This article is technically sponsored by the Selectmen, but the school committee has a vested interest in this article. So this article would be asking the voters to approve funding to hire consultants to do a comprehensive security audit of all school and municipal buildings. And, you know, we've talked previously about the fact that it's been about five years since we had a committee looking at our safety and security, you know, protocols and infrastructure. The Mike Gillette and the chief of police and fire chief and I met with some people to kind of vet potential consultants. We think we found some good, good folks. So hopefully that will pass as well and...
What number is that?
Oh, gosh. I think it's like 150,000 or something. So the way that it's... No, no, the way, the way that the article is worded, it's to fund the comprehensive audit and then also to begin to implement recommendations. So presumably they're gonna have some recommendations that will have a price tag attached to them. So that's another one that we could really use folk support at town meeting with that. And so if that passed, then we would have the funding to proceed in the summer. It's about a 90-day process and then we'd get the recommendations and take a look. In the meantime, we're doing a couple of things I just wanted to let you know. We've determined that we're gonna be, we are getting photo ID, you know, badges on lanyards for all the adults who work in the school district. You know, there are 500 and some employees, we're a big organization. And though I would like to say we, you know, that I know everybody, I don't know that that's true. And so we think it would be helpful just to be able to quickly identify who, you know, who's an employee and who's not. I've also been in conversations with Chief Silva, just looking at some apps that are about, there are ways that the faculty and administration and the police can communicate in this online portal quickly in the event of an emergency. And so I heard a presentation by some people about this and Chief Silva and I are talking about that. And I think that's something that we probably will move forward on even before the audits completed.
Mia Singh, it's Article 18.
Article 18, thank you.
How many articles are there? Does that bring them?
19.
19.
That one will be late.
That one will be late.
We'll have four of them at that point.
That'll be late. Okay. And then finally, I mean, I will be very brief on this last item on the superintendent's report, 'cause I know we're running a little behind tonight. So I included in your packet my report of entry findings. So as you know, this is my first year in this role, I've been in the district for 20-some years, but this is my first year as superintendent. And so I've been conducting an entry process this year to really listen and observe and learn and to calibrate what I believe I know about the district and to see if that's what other people also know and think about the district. And it has been a really wonderful process, I guess I've, I've learned a lot. And so I, I won't rehash the entire report. I shared it with you. I've already shared it with faculty and staff and my intention is to post it so that the community can, can read the whole thing as well. But basically I presented kind of three sections. I talked about how I went about the process, the data collection process. And then I made observations, themes that came through, through this process. And not surprisingly, I would say that generally speaking, all of the stakeholders here, there's a widespread agreement about what the strengths of the district are and it was nice to hear some of those themes, themes coming through, themes about sort of who works here, how we function, our academic outcomes for kids, things about the extracurriculars and the arts and athletics, our curriculum, a lot of things about the professional culture that I learned, which were very, very positive and very encouraging. And then in the last section of the report, I've entitled it Challenges and Opportunities. And so I identified four themes that I felt like I was really kind of hearing or observing. So I should, I should clarify, my data collection involved three things. I had many, many conversations. So some of those were with groups, some of them were with individuals, did a lot of listening. And then I spent a lot of time in schools, in classrooms, going to professional development, talking to students, attending community meetings and all that. And then I reviewed a whole lot of written materials, so...
Do you really review the policy manual?
I have to say, yes, I do. I reviewed the policy manual and, yeah, there were some surprises there when I reviewed the policy manual, so that was, that was a good thing to do. But I will say that reviewing the written materials was probably, you know, the least surprising because I was pretty familiar with most of the, you know, written materials. So I, I have identified four themes and the purpose of the entry findings report is not to present solutions. It's really just to ask some more questions. And these themes and questions are now gonna form the foundation for the strategy work that the district leadership team is gonna be doing. We're gonna be doing a two-day retreat at the end of June. So the four themes, very quickly, contemporary teaching and learning that's future-oriented, a lot of things happening that I think suggests that we already are future-oriented, but this is still on our minds, right? How we're gonna continue to strengthen our curriculum, instruction assessment, to make sure we're meeting our students' future needs and the needs that kids will face in a changing world. And then this issue about how do we make sure we're providing students with learning experiences where they're authentically engaged, that they're not just kind of going through the motions in school. The second theme has to do with what we call horizontal and vertical alignment of curriculum and practices.
Oh, something new.
Yeah. And so one of the things that I note is that we're really pretty good at the horizontal part. So, you know, that people at a grade level are kind of aligned, for example. And we also have a lot of processes in place to review our curriculum periodically and to collaborate around that. The vertical part is the place that's harder, how we kind of create connections, say between grades five and six, between grades eight and nine, those transitions. And so we wanna make sure that we don't have gaps in students' experience or that we don't end up creating repetitions of their experience. So we need to look at that. Third theme, I heard a lot about social, emotional curriculum and services. That's very much on people's minds, parents, educators, students. And so we've already talked about the fact that we're starting a social, emotional curriculum review. We've already launched it, actually, and are gonna be working next year on that. So that's something we'll be thinking about. And then finally, and this was really very striking to me, I heard a lot from teachers, particularly elementary teachers, about instructional time and fitting it all in. Heard a lot about that. And the sense that there are, have been increased academic demands over time, without more time. And we had a lot of conversations about our belief in supporting the whole child and how can we do that and also balance it with the academic demands and rigor. So we'll be coming back and talking more about these.
I just wanna commend you for joining us.
Yes. Tremendous report.
So thoughtfully done and really full of information.
Thank you.
You said there were surprises, there were one, anything that was, I mean, you've been in this for a long time, is there anything surprising?
Well, I, I don't mean there's...
Yeah.
But I guess just, I was surprised at how strongly some of the themes emerged, right? Like at first I was like, oh, that's interesting. And then I just kept carrying it again and again. And so this, this last one, for example, the fitting it all in, I mean, I knew that this was an issue. You know, we've, we've, we've got the chart where we look at the instructional minutes, we're saying we should do for math and for reading. And when you add them all up, it's too many minutes, right? So I knew that. But, you know, I, I spoke with the faculty at every one of the elementary schools and they, they said it differently, but it was a very strong...
I, I do have a question about the lack of alignment between the different levels. We honestly have been talking about that since I've been on the school committee. Why is that so hard to do? And I'll say what Charlie would say if he was sitting here. Does our school districts have them to do it? Is it difficult to do it? Maybe we should...
I know, maybe we should, maybe we should.
I don't know why we can't do it.
I mean, I think we have to, we have to literally create some structures to make it happen, that it's really hard to create time when fifth grade teachers and sixth grade teachers are free at the same time on any kind of regular basis.
So we could...
Professional development? Oh. Yeah.
It's a little of that, we do a little of that.
Can I give a, so, an interesting and concrete example? I think for years, there was a real disjunction between fifth grade and sixth grade math, like what was going on in one place versus another place. And a few years back, we finally actually sent people to see for themselves what happened and then debriefed and talked about it. But, you know, to doing that involved pulling people out of the classroom during the school day, kind of losing instructional time. So, and I, and I think those observations and conversations did a lot, particularly around some of the things where our sixth grade staff could start to use some of the strategies and build on those strategies around how the fifth grade math instruction was happening. Whereas before, they, they would just sort of assume that nobody knew anything and start over, right? And, and so I think more of that is important to do, it's just hard to...
Figure out how to do it.
Yeah.
So do we, do we allocate PD time to doing that? Or we have so much PD to do, you don't have time to do it?
I think the PD is one area, but when you're in PD, there aren't children there. So part of it is really seeing the things in action that makes a huge difference, I have to be honest. It's, it's just a different story than hearing somebody talk about it.
So that means that you have to get people to cover the classrooms and...
And then it's lost time.
Yeah. We have to get some really, like, really good video strategy. I don't know, there might be some other ways to kind of just get it happening.
And remember, things can look around, right? The state relation in framework, things will literally continue to... As soon as you think you've got it, everything changes.
All the time that you're talking about it, it's been solidly shifting to that.
Okay. Thank you. A little offstage, all right?
It's okay.
That's it? Yeah. Oh! Oh, I wasn't planning to talk about that, but I was gonna show the enrollment chart, which Jenny asked about too, so that's the last thing. Okay. Oops, not this. Just combative here. So, yeah, you had asked to see the latest and greatest enrollment numbers. Is that visible here? I gave it to you in hard copy as well. So these are the enrollment numbers that we have for the next school year as of today. Let me tell you what they are comprised of. So it's based on actual students who have registered for next year. So we already have people who are gonna be new to the district, who have come in and registered through central office. They are included in these numbers. We also have some families who have already told us they will not be here next year, that they're leaving at the end of the year. We've removed those folks. And then just some other information that we have, there are intradistrict transfers that I've approved and, you know, things like that. So these are the numbers that we have at the moment. And obviously, things can change over the summer, numbers can go up and down. But the good news is, is that at this point, all of the classes in the district are within the school committee's class size guidelines that we reviewed and approved earlier in the fall. So, I don't know if there was a specific question or...
No, just, yeah.
There it is.
Just like the chart.
You like the chart, yes.
Do you have one of these? Do you change it out like the weekly chart?
I mean, we could give you a weekly chart. We change it that frequently.
Put it in a frame like the, like the calendar, then you just change it out, 'cause it changes.
Right. Right. So, you know, as always, we will continue to, to look at this and if there appear to be changes, I will let you know and we, you know, we watch it very carefully.
Great.
That's it for the superintendent's report.
I knew this was the one, the other thing I mentioned too is... Okay. Okay. So with that, public participation. This is a chance for folks here in the audience to ask questions or make comments pertaining to our district education. What's on your mind? If you have something you wanna share with us, can I ask you to stand up and state your name and tell us what's on your mind?
Sure. Hi, I'm Jane Singh and a conversation just came up this week, so I just thought I'd come up and tee it up. And I think you're actually chatting about it in a month, but just to let you know that some parents are chatting. The middle school has, I just learned, so I could be wrong on any of this, but I just wanted to kind of come to you. The Verizon cell tower on the roof could be true, so that conversation bubbled in. And so just wanted to bring that to you and I do think that Hannah's gonna speak with you next month and I chatted with her a bunch this week just to kind of catch myself up where I could. But it's, you know, of a concern in the sense that let's find out more. So just wanted to have that conversation. We're having conversations on a parent level, you know, so I think it warrants some time and information, 'cause it is an unknown and a known. And just really the only other thing is Dover faced this, I looked that up, and what they were doing and changing, and Ashland too. So similar, you know, towns nearby have dealt with this and, you know, just kind of wanna put it out there that that's a conversation piece happening on the, on the field with the parents. And like I said, Hannah has way more information and very knowledgeable about all this. So I'm excited to hear what she has to say next month too, but that's just what I wanted to...
Yes, we've been, we've been in touch with Hannah.
Yeah.
And we appreciate the information she's provided and we've actually, hopefully in central office have reviewed some of it and we have more conversation.
Cool. I'll be checking some of it.
Talk to them too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
So I'm Cara Buckley. I'm actually here with a group of Downey parents. And we sent a letter, I hope you all received it, I'm not sure if you had a chance to review the letter, outlining some concerns that we actually had about this topic, so it was a good segue for us. And the data has changed as of what we had access to yesterday. So when we sent the letter, our children's class size in the first grade is actually over the recommended guidelines for the school, which is a concern I think that many parents share and really want to understand how we are very closely monitoring the trends in terms of classroom enrollment. We've also done a great deal of research that indicates that when I sent the letter 48 hours ago, there were over 30 homes listed for sale in the Downey neighborhood. In the last 48 hours, three more have actually gone onto the market. So when we think about that group of potential incoming students into the Downey community, which does not include, by the way, the university students, university station students, which is not fully at capacity, we just have really grave concerns about the enrollment sizes. I think the letter also pointed out that there is just a very clear discrepancy in the enrollment levels at a number of the other schools across town. And then in fact, this class size is one of the higher ones in terms of some of the numbers across the state. So, you know, through and through, we have a lot of concerns. Deb has been gracious and accommodating of the many parents, I think, who raise this to retention. She's always willing to make time for us to discuss the issue. You know, and I know Emily, I haven't talked to her myself, but I know a lot of parents have indicated that you two have been very willing to sort of listen to us and hear us out. But I think in the course of those conversations, we've also heard that the infrastructure is very limited down. So as we look at 30-some-odd homes on the market right now, and as we look at class sizes that were over capacity yesterday in one grade and really on the cusp of the top lines of the guidelines in two other grades, like we really have to question, what will we do if we have an influx of students over the summer? How will we accommodate them? Where will they, where will they go? As we understand it, the music room is already allocated to something else, we're turning the salarium into another classroom. And so we just really wanna engage in a, in a deep and thoughtful discussion and analysis of what's happening at Downey and how we can all scenario plan and work ahead to make sure that we have the right solutions in place so that we can accommodate whatever so that we can accommodate whatever happens in the months to come.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope? Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to the next part of our agenda, the discussion items. And we start with the report on district goals and the science initiatives.
I'm going to start us off, but I'm joined here by a number of wonderful colleagues of the Westwood Public Schools. Kate Doyle tonight for this, so I'll introduce them actually first, very first slide. So the leadership team that is here to join me, each of whom is going to come up and talk specifically about what's happening by level. Includes Kate Doyle, who's at the elementary schools. Katie Clark at the middle school, and Becky Green at the high school. And all of them have been very involved in the process as we've kind of really dug into science and technology engineering. I personally think it's fabulous we have kind of women in this department. It's kind of cool, just for all those roles out there who love it. So I want to talk broadly first, just to kind of introduce you to the framing of the goals. The science, technology, engineering goals kind of fall into three of the major buckets within the district goals per year. One is the sort of innovation bucket. There are a couple of things that belong there. The second is in leadership, kind of how we're going to go about implementing it. How do we tap into teacher leadership and other forms of leadership within the district in order to help improve student learning outcomes? And the third is kind of the nuts and bolts of the curriculum. What are we teaching? How are we teaching it? What resources are we using to teach it? I will say it was interesting as kind of I went through the process of thinking about where we were, that these aren't necessarily mutually exclusive buckets of stuff. Some of the things going on in curriculum are actually pretty innovative. And some of the innovations have tapped into leadership in interesting ways. So there, so, you know, the categorization part isn't all that rigid, but it's just a sort of helpful way of organizing to see what's going on. I also want to note that some of the things we're going to talk about tonight, we're going to introduce tonight, are not necessarily things that were initially on the district goals, but they fit in really nicely with kind of what's going on. So we thought it might be nice to share a little bit of information. So with that, I'm going to introduce Katie to talk about our first few slides here, which is what's going on at elementary.
Thanks.
Pressing the arrow forward. Uh, yeah. So the first bucket of the, of the piece that we wanted to talk about was innovation. So the instructional technologies across the district, instructional technology coaches across the district have introduced a coding and robotics program that's dedicated to third grade at this point. And that's going really well with huge interest in it from the students and from the teachers. And so that's found, it was a great decision and I think kids really embraced it. And then all teachers are implementing an inquiry-based approach to the curriculum, which is a really sort of great way of having kids become the meaning makers in the science curriculum. And so that's been something that has really invigorated the program. Kids are reaching for science more and more all the time. In the curriculum realm, we are continuing to roll out STEM scopes as the sort of main driver of our curriculum from K to V. And that, the first year, we rolled out the physical science strand of the standards. This year, we've been rolling out the earth and space. And the plan is next year, we'll really focus on life science so that all three strands of science are rolled out across the three years. The good news is that, that probably 75 to 80% of teachers are already into the life science standards. So we're a little bit ahead of our goals there. We do supplement with a program called Mystery Science, which is, it just covers a couple of the Massachusetts standards that aren't always covered under the national approach to standards. And then leadership. So we have a really strong group of elementary science teachers who are serving on the elementary leadership team. And those teachers help to set goals for professional development. They help to be a voice for science in all of the five schools where there are, right now, two of us in the curriculum sort of realm of science. And they also help to deliver the professional development program to their peers. It's been a really great program to empower some teachers to embrace it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie Clark. And I'm a middle school science coordinator. And Coach and I just started this year. I was the, one of the consultants for this time last year to help realign science curriculum after a student in sixth grade. So innovation for us has gone, we're focused on all three grade levels and, and all of the strands, but mainly with computer science and engineering design. So currently, at Thurston, all students in sixth, grade six, seven, and eight take engineering design and computer science. So we currently have our sixth grade enrolled in those classes. Last term, we had our eighth graders enrolled in those classes. And first term, we had our seventh graders enrolled in those classes. So they get to take those classes for graders. And there's 3D printing, 3D pens, robotics, engineering design, we just bought Ozobots and, you know, coding, and a lot of creative and inquiry-based investigations in those courses. And those are two separate sets of standards. Engineering design standards live in the new science standards. And then the computer science standards live in the brand new digital literacy standards. So we're addressing two new, fairly new sets of standards that have been sold in the engineering design. So they're growing fast and they're bigger. And for curriculum, oh, aside from the computer science and engineering design curriculums growing, we've had to do a full realignment of the middle school curriculum. So historically, Thurston was integrated, which means they taught earth science, life science, physical science at all three grade levels, but they weren't aligned to what the state was asking us to do. Things were in different spots. So we had to shuffle it up again and put them in the right spot at each grade level, which means we had teachers teaching new stuff. So we focused on professional development, coaching, curriculum writing, curriculum development. And essentially, in the end, we purchased an online textbook by Microsoft.
So just to understand, so the curriculum was there, but it was just the way that it, the order in which you were teaching?
Some of it was the order, some of it, the curriculum was there. Some of it, the curriculum had to be tweaked and refined to be realigned to meet the new standards and the new text assessment. So there was a lot of, there were missing pieces, there were awesome pieces and things that just had to be moved around. For example, microscopes. The whole unit on microscope had to be moved from one grade level to another. Because in the state of Massachusetts, to be common with the state of Massachusetts, it lives in the sixth grade now. So things as sort of simple as that, but as big as moving an entire subject to another grade level. So that's, it's been a two-year process. And last year is our final year of the revision. So like next year, our students in sixth grade will be fully aligned to the state of Massachusetts. And in Westwood, we're ahead of them. I work with teachers 21, an organization in Newland that does this all over the state. And we are, we're moving forward at a much better rate and faster rate than a lot of our neighbors. Sorry.
No, it's really, I don't want to interrupt, but it's amazing, it's amazing the change in, in the last eight, even since I've been sitting here for eight years.
Right.
And, and the kids that are coming through elementary school, they're so lucky. I mean, it's incredible what they're learning now.
Yes.
Don't you want to go back? No?
Yeah, you're right. The amount of science and the rigor has increased dramatically over the past 10 years. And then, of course, the addition of new standards that have never been talked before are coming up in all, all the grade levels. And so earlier, we talked about alignment and what's happening and how difficult that is. But the reason is, has a lot to do with, as teachers, we are just given new standards by the state of Massachusetts all the time.
And you just have to take it.
We have to, because we have to conduct MCAS. It's part of what schools do. And MCAS is based on standards. So we have to make these shifts and these changes quite frequently. The good news is, is the science standards aren't going to change for quite a long time. Lots of time and money went into this new set of standards. And they're based on the national standards, the next generation science standards. So we want to be as common to the country as we can, but we still have our Massachusetts standard that we're focusing on. And we still have our, our MCAS that we're using as an assessment. So the, we are going to see a major change in science standards for a very long time. So that's good news. So we can, our teachers can gain this experience and grow their curriculums and then be comfortable with what they're teaching as they.
That they'll have it for some time and they.
Right, yes. And, you know, every, every year, you get better at what you're doing and you're confident in what you, what you know about these standards. So we did purchase the Bar Hill, and that is, all the students at Thurston have a Chromebook. So it's the, it's focused on evidence. We have hard copies in the classrooms and hard copies for teachers, but we don't need hard copies for students because evidence is available or timely for them. It's not a curriculum, there are curriculum pieces with it that we do use, but we still have a lot of the curriculum that teachers have designed that are for the past years that we're developing. And.
So last, can I ask a question on that last one?
Yeah, sure.
Because I remember two years ago, part of the theory on the MCAS was that people in eighth grade forgot, well, my words, forgot what they're in sixth, seventh. So is that talking about refreshing with during eighth grade, they do refreshers?
So the new, well, they do, they do a bit of review, that's what we need to, because they're eighth graders. But, so the new curriculum standards spiral quite nicely. For example, first graders, first grade teachers introduce sound and light. And then sound and light moves to fourth grade, where the teachers introduce sound and light waves. And sound and light waves move to sixth grade. And the teachers add in digital waves and radio waves and ultraviolet waves. So the curriculum grows every few years. Sometimes it's every second year, third year, there's no real run or reason as to where it lands. So because the MCAS is a three-year span of kids learning science, it has to spiral. And they have to build upon what the teacher did maybe last year, but it might have been two years ago, depending on what the topic is. So, yeah, so it does spiral nicely. And the thought is that it's going to better prepare our kids for life in science in general, but also success on, on years.
Okay.
A couple of years ago, I studied the MCAS scores. Then I broke them down into, they had a category, special athlete, they had a special name for it. And they did remarkably well in English and in math, like 10%, but in science in the middle school, it was almost like 50% less.
Right.
And I just, and I know people are giving attention to that. And I just was wondering, you know, how is that being addressed? And I'm sure, you know, the last time I brought it up, everybody recognized it was an issue. Because they did so well in every other subject. Is that?
Well, math and English is assessed every year. And the science is assessed, the science is assessed and then, and then it ain't. So that's one of the points. Do you want to discuss the element needs?
Yeah, we're, we're also going to, so one of the things on the next steps list that I'm going to get to, and I'll tell you now since yes, is we are, in math, in math, a couple of years ago, we started offering co-taught math classes. We're a math teacher and a special educator, we're working side by side. For some of our students who aren't in typical math classes, in order to help our particularly, students who struggle a lot, so we're kind of closing the gap for that subset of kids. And we're going to do that in science next year. We're going to pilot that with our sixth grade program and see if we can roll it up. Just to give a group of students who are great kids who just need an electric support. And I, I think we're excited about that opportunity. And Katie's already started working with some of the special educators to try and introduce more science into their classes, even before we get to the program.
I had the chance, Emily invited us to meet with the robotics team at the high school for a grant. Mass Bio was in here very impressed.
Right.
But that knowledge came out of what you're doing. Get to the point where, but it's incredible what they did. I had the chance, three years ago, I went to Martha Jones for the coding. And it was the high school kids teaching the third graders. I went the next year, it was the fifth graders, my granddaughter teaching a third grader, Tony's daughter. And at the end of the exercises, the teacher said, okay, fifth graders, get your third grade pals, and we're moving on. But, you know, just that they get the kids teaching each other. When they, so the third graders, fourth and fifth grade, is there a gap that they, they're not doing anything related? Could something be done?
In the term, in.
For the kids' interest in coding now, they got engineering, you know, a little later and, and, you know, but is there continuation of that interest before they get to the middle school, which is unbelievable?
I think that actually, so Steve Rat's coming back in June to do a full, full report on the coding initiative and give you a lot more information on that. That's a conversation we've already started having, how do we bridge that gap?
So it is, there's something there that we need to.
Yes, we're, we are thinking about that. So we don't have an answer for it yet, but I think you're going to get more information on it.
Well, it's tremendous that you get the interest of the third grade and then what's available for the middle school.
But engineering is embedded. And so that's part of the new standards, is that, that engineering is embedded throughout what they're studying all along. So they might be doing some engineering with life science. They might be doing it with physical science. So they're getting engineering right through their, starting in kindergarten, they're starting with engineering. So they're doing a dedicated coding class right now in third grade. But they do bring that back and they're doing more on Chromebooks and iPads as they, as they move up in their grades. So they are getting it. And then, but this is just, we're catching eyes. And this is us doing an X-ray of a live egg. And we're, our students are able to track the development of, like, we saw a part of it today. And we saw that the, and so we're using microscopes and this is called, it's called candlelight. And I have 24 eggs on my desk right now that are getting reattached. This is a group of students who, that Allison just referred to, that are, are identified as high-end students and they don't go to science classes that the rest of the students do. So I'm doing specialized instructional projects with them outside of their, in their classes.
I know I'm dating myself, but just infrastructure, are we good? Do we feel right on what you might, you know, all the equipment, infrastructure across middle and high school?
Yeah, I mean.
I am going to dress up too.
Okay. Wait till the end, just wait till the end.
We always want more.
No, yeah, okay. We haven't talked about that, just talk about the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Becky Green, the Science Department Chair. So at the high school level, one of our main focuses this year and in recent years has been to move toward a more student-centered method of learning. So moving away from a teacher-directed mode of learning to an inquiry-based mode of learning. And each different course sort of tackles that in a different ways. The biology teachers have done a lot of work this year and last year in transitioning to a flipped classroom and an inquiry-based classroom. The physics and chemistry teachers are really interested in an approach called modeling. And modeling involves student experiences, creating student understanding. Other work that I've done this year has been to co-teach a biology class with a special education teacher. And that is for, it sounds like a similar cohort of students that Katie's worked with at the middle school level. So students who need extra support in preparation for the MCAS and might not always necessarily be in the traditional classroom, but are and are finding success. We've already had success with some of those students passing the February MCAS. This year, myself, Sean Bevin, and a committee of science teachers have looked at the core sequence at the high school. So right now, it's physical science, biology, chemistry, physics. And we're looking at changing that to biology, chemistry, physics, and then electives or APs. The reason for that is because with the changes at the middle school level, there's really no longer the need to teach physical science to freshmen. So next year, we'll be looking at how that transition is going to occur, what types of professional development will, will be needed in the timeline.
So in a few years, everyone will be taking biology?
Correct.
Wow, that's great.
Correct, all micro. And again, in terms of innovation, modeling as an approach to science education is becoming more and more popular. And it also aligns with the new standards. If you look at the language and the frameworks, a lot of the directives are for students to use models or to develop models or to analyze models in their understanding of the concept of learning. So the frameworks have shifted at the high school level to move away from focusing on memorizing content and learning science, science skills, to instead having students understand science as a more integrated mode of understanding the world and to understand themes that sort of lead between different courses. And modeling is an approach where students are doing hands-on things, constructing their understanding versus teachers telling them content and then asking them to memorize it. Teachers really enjoy it, it's different for students. Um, teachers really enjoy it, it's different for students, sometimes students struggle with it, but in the end they, they really develop this long understanding of science.
Thank you.
All right. Where are we going next?
Yes.
Um, so this is kind of weird, we've had a great year and a lot has happened this year, but I wanted to talk a little bit about what's coming next. Um, so as Kate mentioned, we'll be kind of doing that final alignment of the curriculum at the elementary level. So those life science areas will be added in. And the good news is so many people have already started doing that, but I think it's going to be a relatively easy lift. Um, we're also continuing to do professional development to build up the content understanding of our, um, elementary teachers. Not as many of them have a background in science as they might have in literacy or in mathematics. So it's an important area for us to sort of help them work on, so that they understand the fundamentals of what they're teaching with kids. And I think the big thing, you know, we talked about time and Emily mentioned this theme about trying to fit ten gallons of stuff into a five gallon bucket, which is kind of that experience that I think elementary teachers in particular have. We've noticed it's really going to be important for us to think about integration. How do we have science not be something that you just do during this dedicated forty-five minute period that you might short change at the end of the day if you get busy with something else? Instead, how do you leave it in throughout the day? How do you have literacy activities that build on science? How do you maybe integrate social studies and science? How do you teach some of your math concepts through science? So sort of double that in that way, it's a way to create some efficiency and also loosen up that schedule so that, um, teachers don't feel like they're never going to get everything done that they really want students to do. And we also want to think about the impact on students, if things kind of fit together, it, it just feels better.
So we're blurring the lines in some way, right? I mean, which, and, and-
I would say we might be removing some artificial layer on lines, right?
Well, just because it's interesting, because it seems that that is the way that, um, some of the, particularly the liberal arts, the liberal arts colleges are working to. Where there's this integration more so now than there was in the Stone Age when I went, right? And so, um, it's just kind of interesting that we're moving in that direction at, at this level.
Absolutely, I mean, I think in the world of, of our lives, you know, there are very few projects that, that any of us tackle as adults that only ask us to apply for one specific content area in our lives. So this, it does feel more real and more active.
Everything they're talking about supports kids with disabilities accessing their, these are all the combinations and approaches that, you know, align beautifully, right?
Yeah.
Natural.
So one fun idea on the horizon, Toni, you asked about facilities and things like that. Um, we are in the initial phase, I haven't talked to Emily too much about this yet.
It's a big surprise. It's a little surprise.
I'm having a moment where I think I might have mentioned it. Um, but I had, um, Katie got together with Ken Arias to look at some art of our space issues at the middle school. Because she has this exciting dream about introducing some bigger and more exciting fabrication type tools into the engineering program. Um, you know, stuff that will get kids really excited, it sounds terrifying, like, you know, power tools. Um, but, um, we have models of places where they've done it and done it well. And it makes it really great in the kinds of things you can create hands-on. And again, speaking about kids with a wide range of needs, part of what we're wanting to do is we want to make it real and exciting. So, um, we are starting some conversation about that, that is not-
Alice has never mentioned this. But I love it, it's really interesting.
That is good.
Okay.
Good, Alice, we love the science fair.
Oh, the science fair, wow, you know, we can, we've got another-
She told me about that.
Yes, yes.
Science Mobile.
So Science Mobile may make a, the appearance in the budget and we'll get it. Um, we are also in that kind of final phase of cre- uh, creating curriculum alignment at, at the middle school. And actually, I think we're, we're pretty much to the point where next year, almost everything will be in the grade level where it belongs and, and completely tied. There's one place where we're kind of doing something in eighth grade that we normally wouldn't do, but it's because that particular group didn't do it last year. So, so, um, uh, basically, as of next year, everything's going to be where it needs to be in the curriculum, which is great for us. It means, you know, you already noticed a spike in scores from last year, I think it's because of alignment. We've always known we have really great middle school science teachers, but that was the only issue, the issue was the stuff was kind of not spiraling, it was in the wrong order. Um, and, and finally, I mentioned this, uh, co-taught class in the sixth grade. We really are wanting to think about what about our students, um, who are in that high needs category, who have disabilities, what do we do to support their learning? And make sure that we're, have everybody have a really meaningful science experience. Uh, at the high school, they're going to be completing a transition to more of this inquiry-based design work. And also finalizing the course sequence recommendations and then talking about how do we narrow that out? Because that's a bit of a complicated process, if you're going to change the course sequence. I think there's some exciting implications of that. It might mean we can offer more on the elective front by the time kids get to seniors, but you have to develop those electives. You know, it also means if everybody's going to do biology at some point, you got to figure out who's teaching it. And there's going to be a weird year where there are a whole bunch of people doing bio all at the same time and a whole bunch of people taking bio all at the same time. So that's, that's a big challenge for the department to navigate and I want to applaud, um, Becky and the department for taking it on. I think it's a really thoughtful idea about kind of raising the kind of level of rigor of what's happening at the high school. Um, and it's a big lift, but we've got a great department there too, so. Um, the end of a quotation, uh, for you. Uh, this is fun, this comes out of a blog post that, um, Washington, I think it's Washington Post, runs a blog. Let me get the name for you because it's kind of fun. It's called, uh, I can't read my own handwriting, uh, The Answer Sheet. And it's, it's, uh, described as a school survival guide for parents and everyone else. So, so this was a guest blogger, um, who runs the Center for Innovation in New Jersey, Stevens Institute of Technology, which I believe is in New Jersey. And I love this because what he's talking about is the need to move away from a memorization, we're just going to cram you full of information. Though science is something that's more vigorous and exciting. And I really think that's where we are as a district, we're in that process. It's been a great year, um, you know, a great team and a wonderful group of teachers who are really great and exciting. We're looking forward to keeping them all rolling.
It's one hard work, appreciate everything.
And more I come, and you're going to get that full update from Steve, I think the coding stuff is incredible and you're going to hear from him in a lot of detail about that, too, so.
I think it's fantastic, but, you know, you've all done it, you know, the progress that's been made. So I, I just have something I wanted to get your advice on. This is, uh, I just passed this around. I'm curious to see what we might add to some things and I'd like to have you be looking. This is a list of, of topics that are being used in Ireland to train kids to go work for these twelve American companies. You know, Microsoft, PayPal, Cisco. And they, if you have these skill sets, you're being hired right away, forty thousand dollars a year. The new director of Microsoft in Ireland for all of the European Union, five hundred million people, was a smart girl in math, she couldn't afford to go to college, so she started taking these courses. So then she went to work for Microsoft and they said, we're looking at this, and so she said, how about trying this? And they kept saying, who's this woman, bring her in. So two years ago, they were choosing the director of Microsoft for the European Union, all these computer science majors could have achieved the job. Because he knew more about the practical things. So this is a list of what the topics are. Uh, in today's newspaper, uh, struggling to fill vacancies, uh, mass biotech is growing strong. Uh, they're trying to get people with an associate's degree in certain biological subjects. My only thought is, we're at the cutting edge of innovation here already, what you're doing. But some of these topics, if some of these could be, the topic could be built into a course we're doing, an AP this. You know, our kids could get an internship as a sophomore with one of these companies. I mean, applying to college, this would blow people's minds, that you did an internship with one of these. And these are the skills I'm looking for, so if you applied for an internship as a sophomore junior and said, I, you know, this is my specialty, it's in addition to, I think it could open up opportunities. So it's more just for future ideas, is there anything in here that's worth doing? Uh, Siemens and Walpole, three thousand people, gave to the junior colleges in Massachusetts, hundreds of million dollars worth of computers to train computer-based manufacturing. And you go through an in and out period and forty thousand dollars a year, we'll hire you. So there's a lot of things that if they could be built in, as our kids are learning some of these things. Uh, it, so I just thought that list might be helpful. If anybody knows anything about them, it might be totally worthless, but it, it could allow some of the more creative kids. And when I saw the robotics kids and what they were doing, uh, so these might someday be helpful to think about what they mean and could people use them?
And, uh, could I, I sort of put a plug in for wonderful teachers who have to come back and teach in the morning, so if you needed to slip out at this point, I would not want to do it all.
Thanks for coming in. All right. Uh, moving on, I'm going to talk about the life-threatening algae policy.
Yes, so this is, uh, we've already talked about the policy when Abby presented it, um, in March, I believe.
This is the second reading.
So this is the second reading of, of the policy.
So where do we go, so I think I asked the last time, I mean, there's not a lot of detail on this policy. Some districts have much more, it's online form, you know, detailed. So where do we go from here, are there, I mean, I don't really care if you call it policy guidelines, it's not, I mean, but where do we go from here to get more of the meat, the bone?
After tonight, and then you have the control of deciding to vote it tonight.
Okay.
Uh, you would then be able to convene a multi-stakeholder group and write that.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is the second reading, um, the, the school committee does have the option of waiving the third reading and voting it tonight.
Which would be great, we could, we could start it.
Okay.
Could I get a motion to waive the third reading?
I'll make a motion to waive the third reading.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? I'm assuming there's no further discussion on that, you got it.
Very good, thank you. If you want to send me a school committee rep, I'll invite somebody to.
Okay.
It's a, it's a great topic.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right, and then, um, we've included in your packet several, um, policy amendments.
Yes.
We, there's a new law in Massachusetts that's called the, um, Pregnancy Fairness Act. And so we have several of our policies that are impacted by this new law. There are five of them there. And basically, we have proposed some, um, changes and additions to those policies that are based on the guidance that we received from MASC. Just basically to bring us to compliance with this new law. So for instance, in, um, the nondiscrimination policy in, in the, the portion there where it's sort of describing the committee's, committee's policy of nondiscrimination. And it lists a bunch of, um, you know, different protected classes and whatnot, we would add pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions.
Right, so it's an added protected class to all these, that's all that's added to, to each of these. So do we need to-
This is just a first reading.
Yeah.
So if there are any questions or any more information that you'd like me to get.
Anybody? No. Okay, great. All right. Action items. Approval of the minutes, we have a lot of minutes to approve this time.
We get because we have all those meetings.
We have a lot of committee forums, so we have a lot of minutes.
We did. So we'll start with the approval of the minutes from March fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, are there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second, any discussion on the minutes? Everyone in favor? All in favor, excellent. Approval of the minutes, March twentieth, two thousand eighteen, motion?
Motion.
You pulled me there just a second.
Second, we have our second, any discussion? No, all in favor? Good, excellent. Approval of the minutes, April twelfth, two thousand eighteen, at nine AM. Uh-
We had two meetings.
We had two meetings, so we'll have to do each one, I think, individually. So the April twelfth at nine AM, do I have a, a motion? Come on, please.
I make a motion.
Okay, second, all right. Any discussion on that? No, all in favor? There we go, excellent. All right.
Make a motion to approve the April twelfth.
Please do, and a second? Perfect, all in favor? There we go.
All in favor.
Beautiful, done. Okay, moving on, um-
Oh, school one, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, school choice.
School choice.
Yes.
So this is the annual school choi- choice vote, we're required, um, by June first to, um, have this discussion. So under the Ed Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three, the state requires the enrollment of non-resident students under the school choice provision unless the committee votes not to participate. And Westwood historically has, has, um, voted to not participate in school choice. So in your packet, I provided the language for the, um, rather lengthy motion.
Right. Okay.
Do we have to read the whole motion?
You have to read the motion.
What?
Do we waive, we, we have a motion? Where is?
It is the last page in your packet.
So do we have to make a motion to waive the motion? Make the reading of motion, right? That's the first one?
I, I think you could probably move to, um, approve as written in the packet.
Okay.
But, uh, under the law, the school choice vote is a roll call.
Right. So, um, do you guys want to waive it or do you want to read it?
No.
Make a motion to waive the reading.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, good, we'll do that. All right, so waiving the reading, do I have a mo- well, we have to go roll call to approve, um, how am I going to word this?
I make a motion to approve, uh, the school choice as written, is that what you said?
Oh, we already said that, we've al- we've already done that, so now I need a roll call of who's in favor and who's not in favor of school choice. So a vote for school choice would mean that, let's summarize this, because we want to make sure we get this right.
I think it's that Westwood School Committee declined to participate. Your vote, yay.
Yeah, exactly, okay, good. So, Mr. Donahue?
Yay.
Ms. Jowdy? Mr. Kelly's not here, Mr. Mullin?
Yay.
Ms. Lewis is a yay. Motion passed for zip. All right. Good there?
Yeah.
All right, moving on to new business. So I have a couple of things for new business people. We are, you know, we as school committee members have a string of responsibilities, which are of course, hiring superintendent of policies as well as our budget. And part of our responsibility as superintendent is to provide, um, her with an evaluation. There is a state rubric, um, for, which some of us are already familiar with. For this, are you okay, Charlie? All right, okay, all right. So one of our, as I was starting to say, one of our important responsibilities as far as the superintendent is her evaluation. And we will be doing a summative evaluation during our June meeting. Um, I wanted to just take a few minutes to talk about the process. I checked in with our, um, school committee attorney, Jim Bender, to review the details so that we make sure that, um, we do what we need to do. The rubric that we are provided by the state is, is a guideline. Um, but there are pieces of it that we want to include in the evaluation. Um, so in the fall, Emily proposed goals, which we're all familiar with because we approved them. Um, we approved them at the September meeting. The goals are, are required by the rubric, um, in the following areas. One, professional practice goals, and, um, when it comes to our district and Emily, it was, um, participating, Emily's participation in the new superintendent induction program. Two is the student learning goal, and, uh, the focus here was the science initiatives that you've just heard about. The other, the third is, uh, district improvement goals. And we had two, uh, that were focused on, the building project, of course. And, uh, the, the, um, goal to develop and support practices that acknowledge diverse backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges of our students. So Emily, as you know, because we've all been at the meetings, has been keeping a surprise of progress toward these goals all year. Uh, during the superintendent reports and presentations here at the school committee. So I've asked her to write up the self-assessment of, um, of progress toward those goals. And, um, when Emily presented each of her goals, she tied each one to an area of the rubric as provided by the state. In addition, though not formal goals, as a committee, we had expressed that we wanted her to focus on. One, creating an effective and transparent budget process with earlier and more frequent discussion with the committee. And two, engaging town officials and administrators in a positive, productive way around issues that impact our schools. All right, so in addition to assessing the work that Emily has done around these goals, we have to provide her with feedback. And there's a rating system. And the rating system is in the rubric, which I'm going to send out to all of you. This is the, what it looks like, okay, you will get that. And we have to rate her in four areas and provide an overall rating, and then the ratings are submitted to the state. The four areas are, one, instructional leadership, two, management and operations, three, family and community engagement, and four, professional culture. So, um, we've all had opportunity to hear from Emily quite a bit this year, not just at these meetings, but, and to observe her work in a variety of contexts, right? And as chair, I've worked closely with her, community- And as chair, I've worked closely with her, communicating. We talk at least weekly. And if, actually, if a weekend goes by and I haven't heard from Emily, I feel funny. It's an odd feeling, but we've, we have, we've had fantastic communication. And we'll talk more about that. It's, I think we've had a great open means of communication here. And often, very frequent, as I just said. And there are many things that she does in the day-to-day work of a superintendent that we don't even see firsthand. I've asked her to prepare the brief self-assessment that I already spoke of, and she will highlight in that, or she has highlighted in that, some of her accomplishments and really the areas of growth. It's not just getting to that goal, but the growth toward the goal, which is so important. So in advance of the June meeting, I'm going to ask that each of you provide me with whatever input you'd like to provide regarding progress toward the goals that we're all aware of and in each of the four areas that I just discussed, the instructional leadership, the management and operations, the family and community engagement, the professional culture. And then I will compile the feedback and put it all together in a nice package, and that will be the summative evaluation. And we will discuss the evaluation at the June meeting. Okay? So know that, so these four standards are very, very broad. We could write forever. There's a lot to talk about. They encompass many facets of her work, and it would be difficult to comment comprehensively on everything that a superintendent does. The feedback will probably be most useful, as I said, as a growth process if we can focus on our comments on just a few accomplishments and priorities. The Department of Ed, as I said, provides this rubric. Again, it is a guideline. So you will have it. Happy reading. And I will go to.
You're going to send it out?
I'm going to send it right out to you. And I'll send you the explanation. I'll send you my notes. Okay?
And we'll do that, as I understand it, we're going to do that before we have a reorg?
We're going to do it before the reorg. Then we'll have the reorg. Then we're going to put you in the hot seat there, kid, over there, right there. All right? Get ready. Strap on your helmet. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. All right. I know we have one more thing, but before we do that, I also want to just make a comment, and I'm sorry that the teachers have left, but I got an amazing letter from parents of a child in our district who went, the child was on the Galapagos Islands trip. And actually, the letter made me cry. It was really, no lie, I'm telling the camera. It was a very heartfelt thank you to the tremendous work that our teachers did before and during that trip and what an amazing experience that this particular kid had. And so it's nice to hear that. You know, we hear a lot and, but it's, I wish, I wish the teachers were here to, well, we'll let them know, write the feedback, but we appreciate, I appreciate those parents giving that kind of feedback. So hats off to the teachers who did all the work for that trip. We know who they are.
I may have gotten a little teary as well when I read it.
I'm telling you.
It was a very, very nice letter.
It was.
It was great.
So, and I will share that with you. So, and then we have one more piece of business.
So we just want to thank Danielle for her service this year as student rep. It's very important to have student voice in our decision-making and as we think about all these issues to make our schools great. And we often give people Westwood swag, but we thought this year we might do a nod to the next exciting chapter in your life. And so instead, we've gotten you some items from Bentley.
Thank you for doing such a great job all year.
You have. Your impetus spirit was very important and very helpful to us.
It's been such a shame I like half of my years have us on.
Well, thank you for joining us. Much luck to you and Bentley. Enjoy and come back and, you know, come back and see us. We had.
Owen.
Owen came back to visit. So hey, some of the alums, they show up. And so.
I want to ask her if she's going to be 18 in time for town.
This is why I was going to ask her that too.
I will.
Okay. Oh, wow. Do you have friends that are 18?
Tell your friends.
Yes. And then if they've registered, they have to register.
They still have to register.
No, you had to register by the 10th in order to go to town meeting. Oh, I'm on it. I've got a lot of 18-year-olds and 19-year-olds coming.
Great. Love it.
So thank you.
Thanks, Danielle.
All right. Great. So that's it for new business, unless anyone else has any new business.
Just on the initial, is the cell phone, is that on the agenda?
Well, we haven't officially written the agenda, but we talked, we had talked about talking about it.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. All right. I don't know, do you guys want to get out of here? What do you think?
Why don't we just say it on the next?
How about a motion to adjourn? A second? All right, get out. Love it.